Bring the meeting back to order for the Jackson County Commission for December 8, 2020. We will be in recess for a briefing from First Place. That will last for an hour, so we should conclude that at 11:15. Okay, Ms. Denise, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Let's do it.
Okay, well, good morning. We are here in Phoenix, Arizona, and it is my great privilege and pleasure to be joining you there and also to tell you as an outsider how remarkably impressed I am by your community and the connectivity that you have and this real spirit of community and embracing people with all different abilities. I say that as a mother of a 29-year-old son with autism, as co-founder of the Southwest Autism Research and Resource Center, and as founder and CEO of First Place AZ. This morning, we will be taking you on a brief presentation about what First Place is and our bold vision to ensure that housing and community options are as bountiful for people like our son as they are for everyone else, and that requires fueling a marketplace. You'll hear about our marketplace of opportunity and why people have turned to First Place, primarily when they are looking for what's happening next after high school. They're looking for friends, or looking for jobs, or looking to learn how to live more independently outside of their family home. And as it's aptly named, it may be the first place they live outside of that family home, but it may not be the only place. And for others, it may be a forever place. So you're going to learn more about First Place and our vision and what brought us to Jackson County, and learn more about what we're working on together with you and your community leaders for the Endeavor Park Autism Transition Program, and how you are already building a supportive community, and how excited we are to continue working with you. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm joined this morning by our brand coordinator, and she's going to share with you a brief film that allows you to better appreciate what's happening here in Phoenix.
I first heard about First Place, the vision of the idea of a self-sustaining community for adults with autism over 20 years ago. And to be here now and to see it manifested as First Place is really speaks a lot about the power of a vision to rally a community together.
We're not trying to do everything under this one roof. We're not really trying to shelter our residents from, you know, what's outside the, you know, the front door of First Place. We're really trying to create an experience where, you know, in a community where they feel welcome everywhere.
One of the biggest things that separates First Place from any other apartment projects of its kind is this dedication to space devoted to common.
How are we going to create this collective memory and really build community within community?
We took inspiration from this Kunsugi art, and it's the Japanese art of golden repair. And it's this art form in which broken pieces of pottery are put back together with gold resins. And the idea is that, you know, what holds it together becomes more important than the individual pieces. As designers, we all want to think that what we're doing impacts the world in a positive way, and this is, I think, the manifestation of that.
We know we're being disruptive, or intentionally being disruptive, because we want to ignite a new wave of housing that is specific for special populations.
First Place and the model that has been created here, I believe, is going to be replicated all over the country, if not all over the world. Because of First Place, I see a bright future for my brother. I think every special needs person needs to be treated with the dignity that the people at First Place are treated, and every family needs to know their loved ones are cared for. And so my wish is that every single family could have the experience that we're having at First Place.
And by way of background, I've introduced myself first and foremost as Matthew's mom, but I also have a background in real estate. Actually, right out of college, I went to work at the Dell Webb Corporation. And for those of you who might be familiar with Dell Webb, you might appreciate that they were the granddaddy of senior housing here in Arizona and creating Sun City. And that's where people who were seniors would live when they were retired. And fast forward today, now we have all these different price points and locations and amenities and services, because my being a senior doesn't tell you what I need in my housing, and neither does Matt's autism. And it's important that we also realize that just as we've created an entire marketplace for seniors, we also need to create a marketplace for people with differences. And there is not a one-size-fits-all. And important for you to know what we are at First Place and what we're not, and we'll also describe that for your autism program there at Endeavor Park. First, we're not a licensed property, a medical home, we're not assisted care, or for those needing 24/7 supports. We're not that facility, that property, for self-injurious or violent behaviors. We are for people who have neurodiversities, who are different, who need extra support. We are collaborative or research-oriented. It's not just about looking beautiful, it's about demonstrating and getting results. And most importantly, we are home. You're going to hear a lot about First Place in terms of the property and us as community developers, but first and foremost, what we're developing are homes and also programs to help people live in those homes. This is backed by decades of research. Over a decade ago, we published a report called Opening Doors, and it was the result of evaluating over 100 different residential options for people with special needs across the country. And we found some really good things, but we didn't find the thing that would be truly replicable and scalable and financially sustainable. So that's where we set our sights. We did, however, publish this report, and it identifies 10 specific design goals and guidelines. Those will be some of the guidelines that we also help Endeavor Park include. In addition, we just released a new report, we call it a sister study, called A Place in the World, and we released that in October. And what it does is create a new narrative in terms of how we describe what we need as families or what individuals need to the marketplace in terms they understand across the public, private, philanthropic, and nonprofit sectors. So we'll also be borrowing and using that nomenclature as we help you develop the Endeavor Park Transition Program. And what we're going to do is describe to you the three different uses of First Place, but we're going to focus on the Transition Academy, our Transition Academy, which is something that's being modeled there. So we'll come back to that in just a moment, but please recognize that we've also borrowed the nomenclature from the academic community. So we think about freshmen and sophomores, students and participants, and that's what's happening in our Transition Academy, which is also based on selective admissions. It's not for everybody. As it relates to our apartments, those are for residents, and fair housing rules a day like it does in all communities. And those are for people who need the kind of supports we're providing them. It's not diagnosis-specific. And then we have our Global Leadership Institute, and that's truly what brings us to Florida and to you. That institute is primed to focus on how we continue to move the needle and advance a new marketplace of options for people with autism and other neurodiversities. You saw in that film that metaphor, this Kunsugi art, this beautiful Japanese art where the artist smashes that pottery and brings it together again with this, the beauty, which is that gold resin. And that's what we're going to focus on also when we start describing to you how we're building the Jackson County program. It's what we did here at First Place, where you'll see pictures of how we've created these common area spaces, bringing our Transition Academy students out of their rooms and together with the apartment residents so that they can enjoy these activities, build relationships, create that collective memory, which builds community. Here are some of our spaces. You can see sound baffles here to help reduce the sound. The lighting here, as an example, is all low voltage LED lighting with lots of natural light to respond to the sensory issues of so many of our residents. We have teaching kitchens. We do not provide group dining, which is often a red flag for assisted living and congregate care. And truly, what we're wanting to do is to teach people how to do it themselves, not to be doing it for them. We also have those fun area spaces, which bring out people who are interested in Legos or movies or music. And here are some more examples. We know that health and wellness are very much a part of a person's independence and healthy independence, so we do have a zen room and where we're doing meditation and yoga. We have reading lounges, places to doodle, and places to work out. What you might not recognize, again, according to our design goals and guidelines, is that all the materials that we've used in our construction are all non-toxic, low VOC materials. And of course, there are lots of places to entertain, thanks to the generosity of our Phoenix community. These common area spaces are a bit larger than you might find in other apartment communities, and these represent those gathering spaces. And I must tell you that during this COVID era, they've come in quite handy, especially as we're trying to reduce the numbers of people that are congregating at any one place. We have a capacity of about 75 people, and 55 are currently living here at First Place That gold resin is also ever-present in what PBS NewsHour has acknowledged as the most autism-friendly city in the world. You see First Place in the large rectangular box, and that is within close proximity of our Health and Wellness Center, which is Barren or Logical Institute and Creighton Medical University. We're in close proximity, too, to our Arts and Culture District and Employment, and most importantly, to transportation, public transportation, since so many of our residents do not drive. If you just go east or to the right on Thomas Road, that is also our east-west corridor, and there are several with public transportation. And you see that second box, that second rectangle of FSL, First Place AZ. That's our affordable housing property, one of two that we've developed in collaboration with the Foundation for Senior Living. And it's actually where we started six years ago when developing the Transition Program. We cited the program and our freshmen and sophomores in this affordable housing property that co-located our students with seniors who do not have autism, and it is a beautiful expression of community. Now that our freshmen and sophomores are living here at First Place, several of our graduates are living at that FSL property, that affordable housing property, at affordable housing rates. And if you think about it, what we're doing is in reverse of senior housing. You know, with senior housing, you start with independent living and then semi-skilled and nursing. Well, we've established we're not providing nursing support, but we are providing more intense support early in adult life so that we can increase that level of independence to the greatest degree possible, increase choices in terms of where people go and how they go, and also increase the quality of life while reducing the cost throughout their We are continuing to advance that program and the work of First Place, both in the apartments and the Transition Academy, through our Global Leadership Institute and these five centers. Our most robust is our Center for Education, Training, and Employment. And just last year, we announced a back-office IT firm expanding to our area from Wilmington, Delaware. This back-office IT firm is committed to hiring 10,000 people with autism and other neurodiversities by 2025, and they expanded to Phoenix. And together with Governor Ducey and other officials from our county, from our city, and from the state, we announced that they would be developing 500 jobs over the next five years. Those are full-time jobs with benefits, and they're already, they've already hired about 50 people, several of their very first were from First Place. Now, this brings me to the third use of First Place and the one that's of greatest interest to you, and that's our Transition Academy. And when you think about our Transition Academy, think about it in four different ways. We've got the community engagement piece, which is very important to have, a community that's supportive, because as much as we do teach classes in a formal classroom, the majority of what we do every day is in the community, how we apply these skills to our own lives. Employment is very much a part of what we do and any path toward greater independence. And self-determination. Our son came out of the era of being placed in a classroom and then discussion about placing him in a job and placing him in a home, and I went to visit those homes years ago, and those were not the places that we would want our son to live. This is an era, we hope, of greater choice and greater self-determination of, based on their interests and what people want and need and what their talents are, to determine where they go and how they go with these supports in place. And that household and personal management is also a critical component of someone's ability to keep their lives together so that they can attend to their job and to themselves. The program is, and the learning takes place in three different ways. One is that structured learning, and that's the classroom learning. That's very predictable, it's directed, there are very specific schedules to when it is taught. And then we apply what we learn in a supported way, and that involves our team and our faculty in shadowing and interference so that people can solve problems. And then there's real-time learning. And we are all in this COVID era doing a lot of real-time learning, not just with our technology, but how we get along and how we keep each other safe. And this is a time also where our students are taking some reasonable risks and being able to problem-solve. So what happens when you run out of money, or what happens when you miss the bus stop, or what happens when you've missed your bus? So very important that we not only teach in a classroom, but we apply what we learn here at First Place in what we call independent living classrooms, also known as their apartments. This course, or our Learn for Independence curriculum, is taught through 32 different courses. And if you look at the names of those courses, there are green dots under each. Those represent the number of semesters that we're teaching the course. And I would also tell you that this would work for some of our loved ones who are not on the autism spectrum, too. So you might appreciate that Learn for Work is taught all four semesters. Same with Learn for Finance and Safety and Relationships and Community. And you can see some of these others that are also very important, but not necessarily taught every semester. And they're scaffolded. So as an example, with Finance 1, you're starting with real money basics, and you're joining this program, and you're learning about budgeting and spending and what happens when you run out of money. And in Finance 2, you're starting to solve problems and use a debit card. And by Finance 3, you've got some credit and debit and debt, you're doing more record-keeping, how you keep your finances safe. But Finance 4, you're starting to save for that future and for where you go next, along with your planning. And then people are also learning about taxes, whether they take care of them themselves or they identify resources of others who might be able to help. The Learn for Independence curriculum is something that you will be licensing there at Endeavor Park for the Endeavor Park Transition Program. It's also been licensed by seven other organizations across the country, including two universities. It includes an implementation manual, a course instructor manual, PowerPoint presentations for every course, along with student reading notes and supplemental materials, also known as homework. And the outcomes have been significant. 81% of our graduates are employed upon graduation, and 84% are living in the community of their choice after the program completion. Now granted, we are in Phoenix, Arizona, one of the largest metropolitan areas in the country, and so we are in the center of a lot and of an all. We have 42% of our graduates that have come to us from out of state. There in Jackson County, you have the opportunity to draw from many other counties and areas of people who do not choose an urban metropolitan area, but choose the beautiful lifestyle that you offer. So we're very excited about working with you to develop your supportive community and also develop your program, bringing people from outside the area to Endeavor Park and to Jackson County. We're also exploring with our friends at Endeavor Park the opportunities to create residential soon so that we don't have to worry about the transportation. And modeling your transition program similarly to the one here at First Place, there are several pre-qualifying criteria. And just as the residents here are not for everyone, this program isn't for everyone either. People who enroll here will need to be able to learn in small group settings. They cannot have a history of severe aggression toward themselves or their property or self-injurious behaviors. And we know from experience that there are several comorbidities that come with autism spectrum disorder, but we're not equipped to manage and navigate any current or chronic history of addiction or serious mental illness. We've identified these qualifying criteria over time to make sure that everyone who enrolls gets their full value and attention and also continues advancing. And with that in mind, we want to share a brief video with you, brought to you by some of our graduates, who will share more about what they learned and what this program has meant to them.
Well, budgeting and all the safety aspects of using the light rail, using the bus.
Learned about independence, that it was a great experience.
A little bit on how to, like, find a job, that was definitely really useful.
Get through the program without any kind of hesitation or issues or stress, I guess, really. You know, kind of going above and beyond in classrooms, being able to have independent studies, and, you know, just move forward, you know, being independent, I guess, is the biggest thing that, you know, all were doing for a long time.
I haven't met my first roommate in a while, and I had needed to learn to stand up myself. And when things were getting challenging, wanted to ride a bike, because for a long time I didn't know.
So I have, there's three here, so yeah, so living alone was number one. Number two was being away from immediate family, you know, and I didn't have any family moving out here originally. And then honestly, number three, the biggest thing of this question is, you know, I learned how to build and keep friendships, because I didn't, I wasn't expecting to make friends at all.
Do you want to shop by my own?
I learned cooking, and it surprised me because I got to, I got to learn how to do it, and I got pretty good at it.
I hope to be able to live on my own independently, not really having to rely so much on my parents or grandparents, be able to have a job and just be self-sustaining.
I'm hoping to find an apartment and get a job as a phlebotomist.
In a few years, I would see myself in my own apartment and teaching my brother how to use public transportation.
Well, in two years, I'd like to see myself in a different state and making a living while, with writing and travel, working while working abroad, really.
Living in Phoenix, getting a promotion at Frye, and be in college by then.
We think it's important that you hear it from our students, and our families would also tell you that so many of our graduates are living beyond their dreams. And we've been dreaming a lot with your team there. And special thanks and shout-out to Commissioner Peacock and Willian Daniels. Your leadership has been truly remarkable. And joining also with City Manager Dean, and of course, David Melvin, who we now know as Bubba from your community, and Marty Eubanks, who have been working tirelessly with us to help us understand and appreciate what you know and what you lead so well. Your Endeavor Park property is special for many reasons, and there are many things that we have learned and certainly a lot of history there for lessons that will be taken forward. The property itself, in and of itself, creates a supportive community and has great opportunities to do that with the Autism Vocational Program site, with opportunities for recreation and for training, to be integrated also with some of the other uses that are being planned, as well as opportunities for residential. So people there will also be able to learn and live on the property. This is the site specifically that we are currently programming with David and his team, and we're basing that on our experiences here at First Place and with some of our other colleagues and other communities, based on having not only activity in the built environment and the classroom space, but also how it connects with the broader community and how the community that you're building here will interact with people who have differences. This is the former upholstery VOTEC building, and we are exploring ways to use this for more training. And we're in the process right now of learning more about what is being included in the site so that we can look at these opportunities for greater integration, so that we don't just look at the Transition Program as a space over there, but truly as a valued added dimension to not only Endeavor Park, but to Jackson County. We've had several residents and students who have relocated here from out of state, and we've had several families that have relocated with them from California to New Jersey. And so it was important for us, as we began working with you, to learn more about your community directly from your leaders. And so the team that I mentioned identified more than 50 leaders representing a very broad spectrum of industries across the city, county, and state. We looked at very specific areas, and you'll hear about those different groups that were brought together and how it allowed us to learn from them, also to engage with them at a very early level, and to also dream together about what we could create in Jackson County and Marianna, and what could make all of us very proud. We broke these discovery sessions into six specific areas. One was autism specifically and special needs. Another had to do with economic development and business development and transportation. A third and very robust one was in education, not only an area where we can leverage what's already happening in your community and in your state, but also the opportunity to recruit some great talent that is already in Florida. some great talent that is already in Florida. We also learned quite a bit with our, from our faith community, and that space also of a very supportive community. And then, of course, with your leadership and government, and ways we can align with the county and with the city, leading by example, by training and employing people with autism from the transition program. And then, of course, health. Health starts at home. We also know that it happens in medical centers. And so better understanding what kind of access people would have to tend to their healthcare needs. When we asked people to dream with us about their big vision, and you heard about ours of wanting to ignite a whole new generation of housing and community options, I loved what so many of you had to say about being the right place, right time, and the right community, and building a bridge to the better. And when someone said, I hope people everywhere ask, where is Marianna? And that actually is a vision that I share, because I realize that what has happened here in the fifth largest metropolitan area in the country is not truly that replicable. It's taken decades to get to where we are, as the most autism-friendly city in the world. But there will soon be a documentary that will be released about the history of autism, and it will go back to the first person diagnosed with autism, who is now 87 years old, and he is living a happy life in Forest, Mississippi. Forest, Mississippi, which is about the size of Marianna. And it's a beautiful story and a beautiful documentary that will help us all appreciate what's possible when communities like yours get together, take that leap of faith, and recognize that everyone has value, everyone can contribute. And when we do, we make for a better community. So that documentary will not only start in Forest, Mississippi, but it will also bring viewers everywhere to Phoenix, Arizona, demonstrating what's also possible in a larger community. During our discovery sessions, we focused on training and education, and this, this connected community and all the assets that you have, as we started to create our own map, similar to Phoenix, for what you have to, to leverage for your transition program students, and for others who may choose to live there. We were very excited about the response from your employers, who were quick to say, yes, yes, we'll give someone a chance to succeed, yes, we'll engage. And then thanks to your team there, and also Marty Eubanks and others, identifying funding sources that can follow the person, and that can help offset the costs and significant costs of a program like this. We also looked at referral sources for where families and individuals might come from. Of course, the most important, which is the talent and leadership there, that will help lead and guide this effort with our support. And the health and community supports, and then eyes wide open, we needed to better understand the barriers that we might need to overcome. In the space of employment opportunities and economic and community development, here were some that stepped up quickly to say yes. And we know that, that Family Dollar Store has been saying yes quite a bit, and also exploring another organization that has made a big name for itself by employing individuals with special needs, and that's Walgreens, where they have created years ago, a major distribution center designed for special needs individuals in mind, and led by one of the executives who has a son with autism. That distribution center is one of the most productive in the entire country, so much so that they're building others to model it. Imagine what we could do with Family Dollar Store in Marianna and Jackson County. And so we identified and have been collecting different resources in the area, identifying what we have to work with as we map out your specific program and our next steps. And one of those big next steps was bringing our findings to you, and asking also for you to help us, as we identify different funding sources, referral sources, education and training programs that may be on the ground, that have impacted your lives, or that have touched you, or those you represent in significant ways. And also to make sure that our eyes are wide open in terms of barriers that we need to overcome. We know that Marianna and Jackson County have some geographic challenges, and for some people, it's not on the map. But we know that once they learn about you, they will ask, every, people will ask everywhere where you're located. We also know the school system can be a barrier, there is limited public transportation, and, and the need to renovate the buildings, which we're, we're working on right now. We need to make sure it no longer feels like an institution. And what I mentioned earlier about First Place, and we call, are calling it home, we never, ever refer to First Place as a facility or an institution. People live in homes, and that's what we want to create for those who live at Marianna and in Jackson County, whether they're living and learning in the transition program, or in another home in the community. And we know that the greater community needs a lot of education, because there's a, a lack of awareness of what autism is and what it isn't. It's one of the reasons why we're so excited about the documentary that will be coming out next year, which is based on a New York Times bestselling book and Pulitzer Prize finalist called In a Different Key. That lack of awareness is on us to help people better understand what autism is. And there's a lot of heterogeneity that goes with the disorder. Our son, as an example, is minimally verbal, but he's very smart, and he definitely has a lot to say, it just takes him a while to say it. And so it was critical for us recognizing that, that we are building this as part of a greater community, that we identify some guiding principles, and economic development was chief among them in terms of how we build the next generation workforce, just like the precisionists, like that company I mentioned, that back office IT firm, is building their workforce with people who are underserved, underestimated, and underrepresented. We also know that it can be attractive to new employers who are interested in moving to the area, because a lot of C-suite executives and people up and down the, the corporate hierarchy also have individuals in their families who are affected by autism. And we love the idea of putting another star of, next to Endeavor, next to Jackson County and Marianna because of Endeavor Park, and how it will claim its notice locally, regionally, and nationally. Those guiding principles also follow with us in terms of the greater property development. As you've heard, I spent a lot of time today on that gold resin, while we're very much focused on that gold resin within Endeavor Park, as well as the greater community. And to do so, we need to earn the trust, affection, and the resources that will empower this big vision, and build, and in so doing, build a, a point of pride while we build those proof points for a healthy community and an economy for all. And as I mentioned earlier, we know there's a lot of history in that Endeavor Park property, chapters learned but not forgotten, and how we together can advance those important lessons that people with different abilities, from different backgrounds, can work together to build strength in community, and the beauty, as we all know, of that gold resin and the Kusugi art. And this is just the beginning of some of your gold resin, thanks to the great team at, at Dave Melvin's office, who have started mapping for us, your gold resin, and places for people to learn and to get their healthcare, places for people to work, places for people to worship, places for people to feel very much supported by your community. And so we're here today to start and continue, in some cases, that education process, to have you help us identify possible barriers, resources, doors that you can help us open to employment and volunteer opportunities, and to serve as our proud champions for what you're making possible in your community. And with that, I'm going to stop share and just want to help you understand that during all times, and even at this time during this COVID era, there, there's something we can all do. And Alyssa, if you'd go ahead and share that film.
So today, we're gonna make some dog biscuit treats for Arizona Humane Society for the foster.
What started as a response to navigating dodging and coexisting with COVID-19, has turned into a signature program we affectionately call Kind It Forward. It promotes the abilities of residents living at First Place, and continues to reinforce our contribution to the greater Phoenix community.
How do you spell believe?
During this COVID-19 era, we recognize there's much we cannot do, so we focused on what we can do to support those in need, while strengthening skills, building community, and reinforcing relationships with nonprofit organizations here and abroad.
It's not pulling teeth, it's really them wanting to come together as friends and create those memories and have a purpose. It's been easy, it's... I don't know, it's been spacious.
Kindness can mean so many things, because kindness can actually mean like spreading hope and love to those who don't have it.
We've also built new relationships, one of the silver linings of this era. The opportunity to be virtual volunteers allows our community life team to offer purposeful experiences that build on our community of pride, purpose, and endless possibilities. It also contributes handsomely to the collective memory strengthening the First Place community. The satisfaction of a job well done and successful completion of projects illustrate what we can do during this time, and at all times, as we fill our days with meaningful activities, learn from each other, and lead wherever and however we can. Being able to contribute is a privilege, and something our First Place residents and team feel privileged to do. We appreciate your Kinding It Forward by introducing us to new opportunities and giving us all more chances to build community and succeed.
Are you guys like superheroes here, trying to make kindness around the world?
I wouldn't say superheroes. I would say just people trying to help people.
And with that, we are here to answer your questions, and to also let you know that the work that you have seen today is backed by a beautiful team here from the First Place Global Leadership Institute, Mission Control, which are our finance team, also our marketing team, which not only includes Alyssa, our brand manager who's joined us today, but staff here at First Place, and also at my marketing and communications firm, which has been serving real estate and community development interests for more than 35 years. So it is my pleasure to be able to join you today. I cannot see you, but hopefully, hopefully we can change that, so I can, I can maybe stop my video and see more of you, if that's possible, Joey.
Denise, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you for the presentation. I thought it was well done, and hopefully informative for the board. I know I've been working on this project for a long time, and I'm glad to see it, that we've made it this far. We do have two new commissioners on the board. Today is their first full meeting, so I think it's a good opportunity for them to see what's going on. And after all of this is over, I'll, I'll spend some time with you guys, briefing you on what this is about. And it won't be in a meeting or anything, I mean, it'll be done legitimately, but we'll get you all up to speed. Anybody have questions? I think one thing I would like to say, and I'm glad that you pointed out, and I've said from the beginning, is this program has to be self-sustaining. We were, we're putting it together from that perspective, so hopefully, as it moves along, we'll find more funding. I know that Family Dollar is waiting with bated breath for us to get set up, in order to train people that they can utilize in their business. There are other companies around, just waiting for us to get started, so they can have a supply of employees. I think I made the trip to Anderson, South Carolina, to Walgreen, and the big thing I took away was that these people are very good employees. They come to work, they want to work, and you may have to, you know, spend a little special time with them, but they turn out to be great employees, and that's why many of your major corporations in the US are turning to these programs to get employees.
I got one question, maybe for you or the presenter. What, what is the cost on average per student? Do we have one? Do we know how much it costs per year, so we can, you know, look for the funding sources we need? I mean, I'm sure there's an average median line of something that we have to go off of to help support this. I mean, I know you said we graduated up to, you know, from a small to work it up to large scale. Is there a cost now, besides the infrastructural costs, I understand that, but...
Denise, do you want to address that?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to address that, but do need to put some qualifiers there.
Sure.
First, as I mentioned, you know, we're starting with more intense supports, and when you think about the number of hours we're working with students, it's significant. And that's also getting some significant results. Six years ago, when we started the program, we started it as a private pay and philanthropically funded program. Once we got results, we were able to return to our Department of Economic Security, Department of Division of Developmental Disabilities and Arizona Long-Term Care, and earn their support, so we were able to build a crosswalk. So the, the cost that they are covering on average for students is about $30,000. Now, a year, for the, for an entire year. Now, that does not include the residential, which at this point is private pay. Now granted, we are in an urban, you know, major metropolitan area, you pay for location, there are a lot of other factors, so I don't think the residential portion would be as significant in terms of, you know, being able to draw a point of comparison. But the program itself is expensive, it's like sending your, your child away to post-secondary education. But please keep in mind, that's what here in Arizona, our government is, has been paying, and we are also working with insurance companies now, as well as exploring with Medicaid. Here, it's called Access, our provider, in terms of ways they might also cover it. And we did this decades ago, when I co-founded the Southwest Autism Research and Resource Center, where we came in and we were at a point in history where government was willing to cover this one-on-one behavioral therapy. And we designed a program that looked like And we designed a program that looked like a classroom in a natural setting where they could learn from not only the teachers but peers without autism. And so we demonstrated to government back then that we could design a program at the fraction, at a fraction of the cost of what government was spending with better outcomes. And so when we returned now, a decade later, to government here and demonstrated now as adults, we were able to create a program which could be significantly less than what government's paying for individuals by teaching them early in adult life how to live more independently, they jumped at that opportunity. And so, so long-winded answer to your question, it is expensive. And we would like to demonstrate in Florida that this could be a great route to go to get greater and better outcomes for individuals and hopefully at a fraction of the cost.
We are seeking grants. We're seeking funding from the people with disabilities, what they, what they call that program. But we're looking at everything.
Sure, absolutely.
And, you know, I keep telling everyone, it's got to be sustainable. So that's what we're looking at. And our program will be a little different from what they're doing because they probably have a more in-depth housing component than we will have initially. We'll start out probably with five or six people, I'm just guessing. We'll start small and then grow it from there. This is a program that could really be a lifesaver for Jackson County in that, you know, with Sunland, it's basically aging out. And there are a lot of employees out there that will be looking for jobs. And this, when we were in a meeting at FSU with the dean of the medical school, the lady, PhD in charge of the autism program, said that once we get this thing going, our market will be the southeastern United States. She was convinced that you will have, we will have no trouble finding students.
Just the funding.
The startup's going to be slow, that's why we start small.
Do we have a projected date on the first student?
We were hoping to have started this program already. Denise, do you have a projected start date?
Commissioner Peacock, we've been projecting the fall semester 2021, but as you know, COVID has put a wrench in a lot of our plans, but we're, that's what we're designing for. We're just, we're not sure we can pull all the pieces, but that's what we're working toward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, duration for each student? I know it's going to be based upon each individual talent, you know, so what's the duration of the time of the courses?
The course that we have been talking about, and this is something Denise, you may want to interject, we, it's going to depend on the person. But we will be training them initially to work at Family Dollar. It may take six months, may take three months, may take two years. It depends on the person, how fast they learn.
Commissioner Peacock, to add to that, you're absolutely right. People have, and they come to us with different skills. Some have never worked before, so they're needing to learn how to work. That's where those internships and some of those volunteer opportunities are very important. Having someone get ready for their day and learn how to work with other people, those are all skills that we build. And so we want to build them toward employment in their second year. So in the two-year program, we typically do start with more internship and volunteer to build the skills to learn how to work and then work toward the paycheck in the second year so that they're graduating with a job. And to your point, Commissioner Peacock, also, years ago when we started our employment program through the Southwest Autism Research and Resource Center, we were told by the chairman of PetSmart, which is headquartered here, that those employees that they hired with special needs were the first to arrive, the last to leave, the hardest working on their shift, and they brought out kindness in their fellow employees. And we have heard that so many times since. I also will let you know, having operated the program now for six years, it doesn't just happen. It takes some time and it takes having people in our corner so that when things don't quite work as planned, we can problem solve together to make great, you know, for great employees and great companies.
Denise, we appreciate your presentation. I'm sure we'll have more questions and we'll be back in contact with you.
And thank you again, Commissioner, for your leadership.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Commissioner Hill wants to take a five-minute break.
We'll take a five-minute break. 11:50, you will be back. Okay. Okay, we will recess the special meeting and go back to our regular meeting and we'll complete the agenda and then we'll return to the special meeting items.
That's right. They should be able to use the previous link for the regular meeting. If not, our YouTube is available to view the regular meeting.
Thank you. Okay, where are we?
Well, hold on, let them get the regular meeting back up.